Good evening. My name is Douglas Thomas, Teen and Adult Services Librarian at the Oakley Library. On behalf of the Contra Costa County Library, I want to welcome you tonight to tonight's forum. We've worked closely with the League of Women Voters, the County Elections Department, and CCTV to bring this program to the communities of District Five. It will stream live on Facebook and will be available online after the program on the library and County Elections Department websites, as well as the League's Voters Edge website. Please join me in welcoming our moderator tonight, Maisha Cole. Maisha is a staff attorney at the Child Care Law Center. In her role at the center, Maisha educates parents and child care providers, advises policymakers, and provides legal information on childcare policy and law in California. Ms. Cole received her BA in Political Science from UC Berkeley and her JD from UC Hastings College of the Law. Throughout her education and career, Ms. Cole has been active in policy and civil justice, working with Black recruitment and retention center, the African-American Student Development Center, involved in civil justice and mediation clinics, as well as working at Making Waves Education Program and as an outreach attorney at AIDS Legal Referral Panel. Originally from San Diego, Ms. Cole now considers the Bay Area her home. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Cole.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you? Wonderful. Again, my name is Maisha Cole, and it's my pleasure to be your moderator for tonight's District Five Candidates Forum. District Five includes Pittsburgh, Martinez, Hercules, Antioch, Bay Point, Pinole, Rodeo, Vine Hill, Pacheco, Riles Valley, Crockett, Mountain View, Alhambra Valley, Clyde, and Port Costa. Tonight's forum is hosted by the West Contra Costa County League of Women Voters, the Contra Costa Library, CCTV, and the Contra Costa Department of Elections. Tonight, you will have the unique opportunity to hear directly from the candidates. You will hear their experience and position on relevant issues. Now for the ground rules. As you see, we have three candidates here tonight. Each candidate will have one and a half minute to give their opening remarks. Then we'll take questions. I will address the first question to Mr. Glover, and then he will start, and then Mr. Kramer will start, and then Mr. Trumbull will start, will do answer. I apologize. And then the second question, I'll start with Mr. Kramer, and then the third question, I'll start with Mr. Trumbull. So we're all clear on how we're starting the questions and answers. Again, you'll have a minute and a half for, I mean, you'll have 60 seconds. I apologize. Woo, that's not a lot of time. You'll have 60 seconds to answer the question. We do have timekeepers right here in the front row. They will give you a 30-second warning. So when you see that 30-second warning, you need to begin to wrap up, because at the end of your time, I will ask you to stop. We do need to respect the candidate's time, and we want to make sure that everyone is heard. If there are extra questions from the audience, there will be cards going around, so you can put your question on a card, and those questions will get to me, and I will ask them. In addition to the question-and-answer session, each candidate will have 90 seconds to make a closing statement. You all are quite quiet. So are there any other questions in terms of the ground rules? All right. With that said, I'd like to introduce the candidates. So to my left, we have Federal Glover. He is the current supervisor for District Five. See, I did some research. Second, we have Gus Kramer. I did some research on you two. The researcher on all you all. And then, last but not least, we have Sean Trumbull. Trumbly. Trumbly. I apologize. Trumbly. He told me Trump.
It's Trombley.
Thank you. I told you all I did my research. You got to check your research before you check me on my research. Okay, so with that said, I would like to give each candidate the opportunity to make their opening remarks. Mr. Glover.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and all those who are responsible for sponsoring tonight. You know, in recognition of Black History Month, I would like to just say that I was the first black elected official to the Board of Supervisors in its 150 years and at their 150-year anniversary, also the first person of color. So I'm extremely excited about this month and what we've been able to accomplish with me sitting on the board. One of the things I'm extremely proud of is our ability to make sure that the finances for the county has been kept intact and that we continue to operate with a AAA bond rating and deliverance of the service that we've been able to provide for the citizens of our county. I'm also extremely proud of the fact that we've been able to open three environmental justice centers, as well as our ability to, once again, continue to deliver great services. I have been honored with the fact that the strongest Democrat within Congress, George Miller, has adopted, has endorsed my candidacy, as well as the firefighters, the Deputy Sheriff Association, and many, many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kramer.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for the League for sponsoring these types of events. This is one of the few chances that people get to get to know the candidates personally. My personal background is I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, California, just over the hill from here. And I attended schools locally, went to the junior college system. I graduated with a BA in Public Service Administration from the University of San Francisco. And I came to work for the county in 1974 for the Sheriff Coroner's Office. I worked there some six years. Went to work for probation for a very short while, and I worked for Public Works for 15 years. And I was one of the people that purchased a lot of the property for Highway Four, all the way from Oakley all the way to Apian Way and this part of Hercules. I purchased some of the property for the major overpasses here. For the last 20-plus years, I've been your county assessor, and I have served you very well. And in the midst of many, in the midst of the biggest recession this country's seen in 60 years, I was one of the first elected officials to step up to the plate and say that homeowners deserve to cut in their property taxes under Prop 13. I have been watching the board for many years, and I think it's time that there be a change in this particular class, in this district. And I have all the background and experience from many different departments to do a really good job to represent you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Trumbly.
Thank you, everyone, to the League, CCTV, and to the libraries. Really appreciate you guys hosting all of us here tonight. My name is Sean Trombley, and I'm running for county supervisor because it is time that we had change in this county. We are facing a number of challenges on housing, transportation, and economic development. And what's, the choices that we're going to be making over the next four years are going to be impacting us for decades to come. I grew up here in the county, in Martinez. I went to St. Catherine's and later De La Salle. And I've always believed that public service is one of the most important things we can do, so we give back to our communities to make them a better place. After college, I went to UC Santa Cruz, where I majored in American Studies and Pre-Law. I interned for George Miller. I got a taste for constituent services and being on the front lines of government and helping people interact with the bureaucracy and helping it work better for them. I later worked for Congressman Dennis Cardoza, who represented a district in the Central Valley, where I started out as a staff assistant, and I worked my way up and became his Communications Director and Senior Advisor on Housing and Financial Services Issues. I later worked for an organization called the Democracy Initiative, where it was a coalition founded by labor, environment, and civil rights organizations working to get money out of politics and defend and advance voting rights across the country. But it was too much time in DC, and it was time to come back home to Martinez, where my wife and I came back, and we encountered the housing crisis firsthand. And this is a challenge that people of all generations are facing, whether they're seniors, young people, working families. We need to be working on these issues, and I hope
Thank you.
in the next four years, I look to be working on them.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Okay, so next, we are going to do the questions. So again, you have 60 seconds. Not a lot of time, but I think it's enough time to get out what you need to get out, and then you can add some of it into your closing. That's just my suggestion. So again, Mr. Glover chose the number-one speaking order. It was random, so don't think that we just assigned the order based on seniority or something. He chose number one, so we're going to start with you, Mr. Glover. And the first question is, what district issues will you make a priority? And how will you work with your colleagues to make them into policy?
So there's a number of issues that's facing the district, the county as a whole. We continue to look at the fact that we need more affordable housing. We need job securities within the district. We need to be able to assure that service delivery is in place. As we look at the district as a whole, transportation has become a number-one issue, getting people in and out and getting them back home so to take, to have the quality of life that's needed to serve, to be a good parent and a quality member of community itself.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Please do.
Okay. What District Five issues will you make a priority? And how will you work with your colleagues to make them into policy?
Well, to start with, unfortunately, the very issues you're talking about, Federal's talking about, have been there for 19 years, and he's had 19 years to address them, and they've gotten nothing but worse. Highway Four is a parking lot at 5 o'clock, 4 o'clock. And, and, thank you, Federal. The biggest issues addressing the county today are transportation, housing, and homeless. And they're all tied together. The transportation and affordable housing will work together, but you've got to get these, the poor people, in housing. And if we don't do that, it's going to get progressively worse. The housing issue in Oakland has a great idea to keep people out of housing. I have an idea of starting to use public land to build public housing. It's what we really need to do. And you've got to give these people jobs. You just can't give them a place to live. You've got to create jobs for them. And FDR did that during the Depression by creating California Conservation Corps and WPA. Thank you.
Thank you. I let him finish that because of the time. Can I just remind you all, please turn your cellphones off or put them on silent? That goes for the candidates also, moderator also. Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Trumbly, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, that's all right. Thank you. We've been talking about these issues. I mentioned them in my opening statement. Housing, transportation, and economic development are absolutely fundamental to the growth of Contra Costa County. As Gus mentioned, these have been challenges that are not new. They've been growing. And we need to build a regional coalition that's going to help us build the affordable housing and accessible housing here in the community, but also give us transportation options beyond roads and freeways. We need to get that ferry moving from East County all the way out here to Hercules and Pinole to give people an additional option to get into the city or commute into Oakland. Expand Amtrak Rail, working with regional partners to get a station out here in Hercules. And actually start attracting bigger jobs so people can work where they live. Everyone has encountered traffic. They know it's there. We have 1.1 million people in this county that every morning are getting into their cars and driving into work or trying to find a bar parking space. We need to start attracting big businesses, but also attract and make it easier for small businesses to get off the ground locally. We are facing challenges in all the towns along the Northern Waterfront, whether it's permitting, but we can do more.
Thank you. Okay. Question number two, and we will start this with Mr. Kramer. How will you pursue new initiatives within the existing budget? That's question number one. It's a two-part. And two, what existing programs could be streamlined to free revenue for new initiatives?
Well, I'm talking about, let's talk about old initiatives. First of all, the county just built a new county administration building in downtown Martinez, and they built it in a swamp. And it was supposed to cost $100 million. Unfortunately, I warned the county not to build the building there, but they built it there anyway, and it started to sink when they built the foundation. The building is 20% smaller now and is a 44% overrun, $44 million. We need to listen to our rank and file in the county. We need to listen to the little people who have the ability and have history who can give us advice, not just the consultants who think they know better than everybody else and they come in when they do these large projects like this. We don't listen to the rank and file enough.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, sir. How will you pursue new initiatives within the existing budget? And what existing programs could be streamlined to free revenue for new initiatives?
Well, I'll start off by talking about the pension obligation bond that is coming up to maturity soon. And it's time we take care of our county workers. We have balanced our budget on their backs for too long. They haven't had raises. They have had furlough days. It's time that we paid some attention to them and thanked them for all their hard work in public service. I'd also might want to consider giving them retirement health care. As Dan Bornstein criticized me in my interview with him, Medicare is not enough for people. We need to take care of our workers. We can also streamline our permitting process, as I mentioned earlier, to get businesses off the ground. It takes too long for small companies to submit fire, health, water, all these different permits. It can take over years, over a year by the time a person rents a building and by the time they can get that door open. Let's shorten that, get more people able to open businesses, create those jobs which will in turn bring us more revenue.
Thank you. Okay. Question number three. We'll start with, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm skipping you. Mm-hmm. I apologize. Okay, Mr. Glover. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that initiatives are very important, but they need to hit targets. And one of the things that is going on with initiatives that I have started is the Northern Waterfront Employment Initiative, Economic Development Employment Initiative. We need to have more monies within our coffers in order to provide services that exist today and ongoing services that are going to be important. So when you look at an initiative, it has to be something that's going to have economic growth within it to be able to provide the resources that's needed. It consists of job centers that stretches the whole county. It involves the cities so that the cities can be major players and also receive some of those opportunities that economic growth will bring. Other initiatives that may be important could be built on this, but looking at the problems that exist today, that initiative will allow that we're able to get into the problems that were identified earlier within my opening statements.
Okay. Thank you. I'm trying to be cognizant of time, but also let them finish their sentence. So just want to let you all know. This is my first time moderating, so bear with me. If you have questions, can you please hold your card up, and someone will come around and collect it, just a reminder? And again, I apologize for not letting you answer that question. Okay. Question number three, and Mr. Trumbly will start. Contra Costa has been plagued by scandals involving county officials abusing campaign funds. Do you favor campaign finance reform for county offices? And what should those reforms be?
I really appreciate you bringing up this question. It's something that really strikes deep to the heart of what government is and public service. If we can't trust our elected officials to keep their hand out of the cookie jar, then it's, then we're in a really sad state of affairs. Whether it's Mark Peterson, whether it's Joe Cantamilla, we've had the same rotating cast of characters in this county, jumping from one office to the other and then getting in trouble with the FPPC. I'd like to put a stop to that. I'd like tighter oversight. I'd like to digitize campaign finance contributions. And rather than just scan PDFs that can't be searchable, I'd like to make it so we have more transparency and accountability in our campaign finance and look at ways that we can get big money out. We already have fairly respectable campaign finance contribution limits, but let's increase the transparency and accountability for those and create a system in which people can have a little bit more trust in their elected officials.
Thank you. Mr. Glover.
Thank you. I think accountability and transparency go hand in hand, and I think that we all have a responsibility and assurances that when looking at reform, that we need to be all-inclusive of what the reform is and making sure that all things are fair process and that when reporting, that we have identified those things in timely fashion.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer.
I couldn't agree with Sean more. Sean hit the nail on the head. The present FPPC rules are adequate. The problem is, they're driving big money underground, and they create independent expenditures. Federal is going to be the benefactor of two huge independent expenditures, one from the oil industry and one from the marijuana industry. And he can honestly say and stand back and go, "I didn't know about them." But he knows about them, and he knows they're coming. And it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars are going to be coming his way and in your mailbox in the form of mailers and other financial help. I think we need to, as Sean said, we need to be more transparent in where this money's coming from and why it's going to where it is. It unfairly influences the political process and robs you the right to have the person in office you want.
Thank you. Okay. Question number four. And this will be starting with Mr. Kramer. Correct? Oh, Mr. Glover. See, you guys got me confused.
Pick one.
Doesn't matter. Whoever you want.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Glover, question number four. Recent polling shows homelessness and housing as the most important issue of concern to Californians. If elected, what measures would you take to address these concerns?
Well, we will continue on a number of the measures that's in place today as we work on homeless services. We're working with individuals within the county, Levana Martin, who does an outstanding job with it. She's well-connected with state government in which we're looking to do some good work with homeless services. But it's a major undertaking, and certainly one of the pieces that will have to happen is that community involvement on all levels is going to have to be also involved in the processes that are made. I'm sorry, the second part of your question.
Homelessness and housing are most important issues of concern, and how will you address those issues?
And certainly, housing is the important part because if people are homeless, that means that they don't have housing. And so we need to make sure that we're building adequate housing that would also be affordable for folks that are homeless to be able to get into those houses, as well as the fact that we're
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, that's your time. Mr. Kramer, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please do.
Recent polling shows homelessness and housing as the most important issues of concern for Californians. If elected, what measures will you take to address these concerns?
Homelessness and housing have been the most important issue from the day one of my campaign. I put my money where my mouth is for years. I recognize the need for affordable housing and the need to help people who are down and out in a place to live. I personally have built six, six mother-in-law units and properties in central Contra Costa County. I have approved and built over a dozen small affordable houses in the Bay Point area and throughout Martinez and Concord. I can't tell you how many times I've had people reach out to me looking for a place for somebody who was homeless or about to become homeless because they were losing their home, and I helped them out. So I understand the need, but you need, again, you need employment for these people. And there's nothing wrong with having a local, the state had it for years. We could resurrect it in Contra Costa, a work program for helping Public Works and do other public projects.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Housing and homelessness are, they go hand in hand. And we're seeing it throughout Contra Costa, throughout the Bay Area, as a crisis that is growing every single year. I'm proud to be supported by Norah Lee Gipner, Councilwoman in Martinez, who has really stepped forward on the homeless issue to provide services to people who don't have a home. They don't have access to showers or clothing and stepping into a void and a vacuum that the county needs to be doing more on. Core services are wonderful, but we need to do more, and we need to support those on the ground that know their communities best and know the people there and give them the resources, continue doing the good work. Partner with churches. But it's beyond that. At our community colleges, 44% of our community college students are housing insecure. They don't know where their next rent check is coming from. They don't know if they're going to have to sleep in their car at night. This is a challenge that we need to build more housing now. Work with our regional partners. RENA numbers are going up every year, and we're building not nearly enough housing.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kramer. Next question. You ready? All right. The majority of open jobs for Contra Costas pay well below medium wage and living wage standards. What is the county's role in addressing this gap? And what county resources can be used?
For the, there's minimum wage? I'm sorry, I have to re, start the first half of that question?
Okay. We're going to... Most individuals living in Contra Costa County are paid well below the median income level and the living wage standard.
Well, that's impossible because median, by statistics speaking, median is the median. So you couldn't have most of them below that. So the question has a flaw to it. So if you have another question or want to redirect the question.
Okay. Let's redirect, let's redirect the question. Many people living in Contra Costa are living below a standard of a living wage. People can't afford rent. People can't afford housing. People can't afford childcare. What are you going to do to address this? What resources can you give people who live in Contra Costa County to address this issue?
Well, it goes to the affordable housing element, number one, we've talked about before. Number two, there's nothing wrong with the county instituting a minimum wage standard. They have in other cities in the Bay Area, and it's been rather effective. That's where you start. You have to get people more money so if they're working at McDonald's or a low-service job or at a hotel, that they have a wage that they can actually feed and house their family.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly.
I'll add on to that about the minimum wage. We have a statewide $15 minimum wage here in California, but we know that's not a living wage. I apologize. It's not $15, but it's not a living wage here in the, in the Bay Area. We need to attract bigger companies to come here, provide jobs, make it easier for businesses to open, make it easier to start a business, reduce permitting fees. But we have to support our workers and actually support labor, support unions. Unions provide great working jobs for working families, and as long as we're supporting them in PLAs, I think that's what we should continue to do.
Thank you. Mr. Glover.
And let me just say that I've been a part of a number of the PLAs that's been instituted within the county here. Living wage jobs are very important, and we need to make sure that all of our companies that are coming in are going to be paying those minimum wage jobs. One of the things I look at with the Northern Waterfront Economic Development Initiative is that these will be good-paying jobs, union jobs, and that they will give people the opportunity to buy a house or to make sure that their rent adequate and at the same time, be able to get on transit systems that will get them to and from work to areas where there are affordable housing units.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Trumbly, next question. What development is needed in District Five? And how would you use your office to encourage it?
Federal, you mentioned the Northern Waterfront Initiative a little bit earlier, and that was started in 2014, and we have not seen a lot of progress on that. In fact, we have a few memorandums of understanding along the waterfront with a few cities. We need to really focus on that. Make it a priority for jobs, make it transportation, make it so people can work and live in the same place. I think attracting big companies, attracting small businesses, that's really what we're going to have to focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Glover, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No. One of the things that you have to have in areas are different clusters of jobs. And one job doesn't fit all, but we need to be working with our community college just as we have been doing, working with the companies that exist today and making sure that we're able to have that supply chain right there on site to help with the development of those jobs. We need to make sure that people that are living in affordable housing have access to job centers. And this to job centers and this is all-inclusive in the Northern Waterfront Initiative, but it goes farther. It talks about reverse commutes where people do not have to get on the road and are able to work in the communities and where they live as well as the relieving the impact that we have on our major roads that are being severely impacted by other communities.
Thank you. Okay, Mr.? Did you answer that question, Mr.?
No, I'm waiting.
Mr. Kramer? Would you like me to repeat it? What development is needed in District Five and how would you use your office to encourage it?
Well, I think Hercules is a very interesting community, District Five, that kind of developed itself, that was nothing more than a dynamite factory out here that kept blowing up and wiping out the population every three or four years before World War II. But it, it figured itself out and it, it's what we see today. It's a lot of county buildings and some, a lot of private sector office space and, and it's done well on its own accord. And East County is going to be a problem. East County used to be the home of US Steel, Dow Chemical, Crown Zellerback, Crown Core Conceal, all these major, major places, employers, but manufacturing went away. Wells Fargo and B of A put major call centers in East County and they've shut them down because they weren't effective. And they couldn't get the quality, they claimed they couldn't get the quality of employee they wanted. Now, I, I'm not going to speak to that, but those type of centers have closed. What we need in East County is major manufacturing, not call centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question.
Could I rebut that?
Oh, I don't think we're going to do rebuttals tonight. Maybe at the end, if there's more time, then we'll come back to that.
I'll do it in my clothing. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glover. Does Contra Costa need a four-year public university in District Five? If so, what will you do to encourage it?
Certainly, one of the things that I think we have a great opportunity to do as we look at the Naval Weapons Stations, there's a great opportunity to bring a four-year university there. And I know that within that, within the plan that's on the table now, that's one of the goals of the Naval Weapons Station that exists in the city of Concord.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
I think it's an honorable approach or honorable try to do a four-year university at the Naval Weapons Station. It's probably the most centrally located property in the county, being it's at the intersection of Highway Four and 680. We have one in Cal. It's probably underutilized and has plenty of land to go with it. So, sometimes rather than reinventing the wheel, it's better to enhance the wheel you have.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly?
I think we're the largest county without a four-year university in the state. We used to be much better served by Hayward State, now Cal State East Bay. Traffic once again makes that very difficult to get down there if you want to commute to that school. So, yes, we do need to support a four-year school, we should help a four-year university. We need to support Concord, but if they can't get it done, we need to identify new land to get that happening, whether that's space that was formerly occupied by one of the refineries or manufacturing plants, see if we can get that land cleaned up, find some federal and state dollars to do so. But we're really going to need to focus on education here and make Contra Costa a destination.
Thank you. Okay, next question for Mr. Kramer. Contra Costa is home to many fossil fuel industries that provide many high-paying jobs. Do you accept the science of climate change and what can or must the county do to address it?
First of all, yes, I accept, I accept the idea of climate change. That's why I have such a good tan. The, the fossil fuel plants in, in Contra Costa County, when I took office over 20 years ago, there were seven refineries in this county, now there's only four. The one thing that will happen with the refineries eventually, as more and more of us buy Teslas and Nissan Leafs, is that the, 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 the oil refineries are going to have to transition. They won't go away, we'll keep the high-paying jobs, but they're going to transition to power plants. They all have ancillary power plants on, on site to run their offices. And as far as those high-paying jobs go, very few of them now, there was a time when 40% of the employees of the, of the refineries lived in Contra Costa County, now it's less than 10%. They're living in Solano County where it's more affordable and can't blame them.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly?
I wholeheartedly embrace that climate change is one of our biggest long-term challenges. We are one of the second most industrial county in the state, following only Los Angeles County. We have refineries that are spewing out toxic chemicals, they do their best to contain what they are putting out, but we need to look long-term and understand that refineries aren't going to be there in 50 years if we're going to transition away from fossil fuels. So, we need to start focusing on just transition, starting having that conversation now. They've provided great jobs for working-class families in our region for a long time, but we need to start looking at what else we can do, whether that's turbine manufacturing and other large-scale manufacturing that isn't going to be contributing to climate change. We're going to have to start looking at seawalls. We have a lot of infrastructure along our waterfront, whether it's rail lines, and that is something that's going to need to be protected and we're going to need to invest and have a regional plan. So, yes, that is a huge challenge we're facing.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Thank you. Climate change is very important and one of the things that is happening as we are here tonight is discussion that's taking place trying to identify what the new jobs are. What are those jobs going to look like for the future and how do we make sure that we have a trained-up workforce that's going to be prepared for those jobs? One of the things we do not want to do is to put people that are working today out of work. So, we have to be very proactive in making sure that we train up workforces that are going to be ready for whatever that new job looks like.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Trumbly. Congestion and commute time seem to be increasing. What measures can the county take to address this serious problem?
I think we've talked a little bit about traffic and the crisis that we're facing here. Getting a ferry along the waterfront needs to be a priority. We now have Jim Wonderman, who was appointed by Gavin Newsom to be the Chair of WEDA, formerly the Vice Chair. He lives in Pleasant Hill and so he understands the traffic issue and has made ferry service a priority to the East Bay. We also need to support Measure J. We need to get people walking, biking and off, out of their cars to get to work, make, bring jobs locally so we're not driving long distances, build housing locally. And we also have a lot of folks that, I think there's 240,000 trips every morning through commutes, people coming from Solano County, coming from Stanislaus County, Merced, San Joaquin, and those commutes also add to our congestion also. So, it's not just a local perspective, it's a regional perspective. We're going to have to work with state leaders and the nine counties of Bay Area.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Yes, good question. These are the issues that I've been working on for a number of years and I think we're starting to see that, a, a great transition there. You cannot continue to widen highways. That is not the answer. What we have to do is put people in transit systems that's going to get them to and from work. We have to identify job centers here locally so that we can get a reverse commute and have people that are able to live, work up in the communities that they live in while at the same time identifying how we bring more transit-oriented partners to the table because it's, it's the first and last mile. Once a person makes it to Bart, we got a parking issue. The bottom line is we got to do interconnectivity to get people from their homes to transit systems that's going to allow them to get to work. And the reverse commute that's offered in Measure J is going to be very important. So, I would encourage you all to make sure that that measure become a priority for you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Glover, next question. What can Contra Costa County do to help foster kids succeed after aging out of foster care?
Yeah, that's a good question and one that we continue to work on in the county because we want to be able to capture those youth while they're a part of the system and to give them the type of training that they need and the services that they need to be successful. Many of the youth, foster youth end up emancipating out. And so, we want to capture them at that point to make sure that they have the housing needs because they become a target for human trafficking and other things. So, we want to make sure that they have safe landings and are able to go to have housing and job opportunities as well as continued education to make sure that they're successful. These are the things that we're working on within the county and we, we intend to continue that work and to be even more pointed in terms of identifying where our youth that's failing, how they're failing, and to get them up into adequate housing as well as institution of higher education.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, foster children issue has been a problem ever, even when I was a kid. I remember kids who were going to high school with me, turning 18, and their foster parents just put them out, said, "Ah, we're not getting a check from the county anymore, congratulations, there's a door." And those kids either ended on the street, most of them did well because churches took them in or churches found other places for them in the, in the community to live. And there was an effort for these kids to find them a job. Finding a job is the cornerstone. And the non-prophets and the churches are very good at working with these kids, but we have to be a safety net for them. We have to identify them before they turn 18 and get them into some type of program so that they, they don't have this dead time, I hate to use that word, but where they're, where they're at risk, they're truly at risk.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly?
Thank you. The former congressman that I worked for, Congressman Cardoza, he was actually Chair of the Foster Caucus in Congress and had adopted two foster kids himself. I, I knew them very well, they had faced a lot of challenges in their, in their childhood and they were some of the lucky ones that did get adopted. A lot of them are stuck in a system where they don't have adequate services, they don't have adequate support. And the county has a huge role in providing those social services, working with schools, making sure that we can work with those kids, keep them out of trouble, divert them from any trouble they might get in, but also just being there for them. What we take for granted, having parents pick us up after school, they may not have that. So, we have to give them opportunities and actions and really understand that they're members of our community as well.
My parents didn't pick me up after school.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. You want to talk about it?
That's for after, we can have a discussion afterwards. Okay, Mr. Kramer? Would you be in favor of bringing or opening an emergency hospital or a facility in West Contra Costa?
Yes, I was the poster child for CCHP, that's the Contra Costa County Health Plan, some 25 years, 30 years ago, when I was President of Local One. And that program is still alive today and it's unfortunate that West County has had its health services allowed to languish and suffer to the point where it doesn't exist anymore. The only emergency hospital out here in West County, I think it's Kaiser. And I'm not sure who to point the finger at or who to blame. As much as I'd like to blame federal, I don't think I can yet, but I'll work on that. But, 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 but that doesn't help the people who need the service. The people who need the service need it now and we need to do something out here in West County. I'm not sure why the county hospital hasn't signed a contract for West County's Hospital District and started providing services.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly?
I, I would add, right, exactly right, that we need to work with the county hospital that's in Martinez to sign a contract out here in West County to provide those services. We still have Las Madonnas Medical Grant District out in East County and we saw the, the disastrous effects out there. More access to health services is critical. If you're not getting access to the hospitals or, or health services, you're really at a true disadvantage. If you have to go through traffic over Highway Four or into, or to Kaiser as your only options, we've all waited in emergency rooms, it's just not adequate. So, we absolutely need to bring more health services out to West County and East County.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Yeah, and a lot of that's been looked at today. One of the things I would say is that the, the county stepped up to the plate in 2006 when there was a lot of things going on that would have shut the hospital down. We were able to step in and to save the hospital for some 10 years before its closure. One of the things that we have done is turned the hospital into a clinic and, and we're, we're providing service that way. We also have been working with Lifeline and are providing urgent care service within the Pinole area. We continue to look for opportunities and yes, more emergency services are needed. Kaiser is looking at the opportunity to double the size of its facility for emergency services, but we still need to find other alternatives for the residents and we as members of the, the board are looking for those opportunities. I've been working closely with Supervisor Georgia down through the years and continue to work on it.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbly, next question. Since you will be representing part of Pinole, would you be interested in coming to our council? I'm assuming their council meeting.
Absolutely, and I'm proud to be endorsed by Anthony Tave on the City Council in Pinole. It's a huge district, from Antioch all the way to Pinole, and I think it's important that we show up in every single community and be present, working with those elected leaders and working with community leaders as well. You want to make sure that they know that you're there to help them, that if they have problems, whether it's picking up an illegal dumping site on county property, they can call your office and get it handled. Or if there is any other thing that can possibly go wrong, that they, when they have your cell phone number, they can call you and you answer and you can get the, get it solved.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Yes, I am endorsed by the remainder of the council members, the mayor and the other three council members that's on the council, and that's because they do have access to me. And I'm certainly willing to show up at their meetings. One of the things that we always need to be aware of is where the council wants you to be a part of their government agency, their governance to their agency. And so, we need to be careful of how much we want to be at those meetings without their desire. But yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, I make a habit as a county supervisor to go to city council meetings throughout the district and in fact, throughout the county.
You would make a habit?
Hey, you can't interrupt him.
The, I'm not endorsed by any of the city council from Pinole or any other city council people in this county because I don't want to be beholden to any of those people. I want to represent you, the people, not some other elected official. So, that's why you'll find me not asking for people to endorse me because they've watched me do my job, I do it well. The state of California says I'm one of the best assessors in the state. I have a $16 million budget, which always comes under budget, never over budget.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, Mr. Kramer. Prop 13 has capped the revenue that fire districts receive. With Californians, with Californians' increase in fire activity, what, what ideas do you have to assure fire districts have enough resources to meet the increasing demands?
I think we need to go back to the people and ask them to self-tax themselves if they're interested in doing that for their local fire services. We could sit here and promise the fire district millions of more dollars for the fire services and provide them, but at what expense? Where's that money going to come from? Who else are you going to take the money away from? You can't take it away from the county hospital. No one's talked about it, the big white elf in the room, but every year, the county hospital budget is down about 30 to 50 million. This year, it's going to be 100 million. So, I would love to give the firefighters more money. I would love to give them more equipment, but every time they go to the people in East County, they turn it down. So, where does that money come from? Maybe it should be coming from the state, maybe it should be coming from the feds. We need to ask our assembly people in the state legislature and the feds, who all served as county supervisors and went up. And soon as they get out of the Contra Costa County, they get Sacramentoitis and they forget where they came from.
Time. Thank you. I'm actually out of order. I skipped Glover and I'll, I'll come back to you. But, Mr. Trumbly?
Sure. Absolutely, I think we, it's, East County has had an opportunity to pass the attacks to support their firefighters out there. Vince Wells has suggested it might be time to consolidate fire districts in East County and Confire. So, I think that's something we're going to have to look at. But other communities like Pinole have, are going to be putting forward their own tax to pay for their fire service and I think we should support communities that do that. Fire service is going to be in, under increasing demand as our wildfire season gets longer and longer and longer every year. We saw the dangers of that when the fire hopped over the Carquinas and that was a very scary... very scary time for a lot of folks over here. So let's support our firefighters, make sure they have the funding, but we're going to have to work really hard to make sure that we can have, to find new sources of that funding as well.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Thank you. One of the things I'm very proud of is that I've been working with the firefighters and I have earned their endorsement for my candidacy, and that's because of the work that we have done together in trying to make sure that the firefighters are receiving the tools that they need to be successful and keep them out of harm's way, that we continue to work with them in terms of making sure that they have adequate staffing and that we will continue to do that. One thing that is happening is that the cities and a lot of the communities, in particular Pittsburgh, have stepped up to the plate in assuring that as growth continues to come, that they are putting money to the side to support those firefighters, and we have to get more municipalities into doing that. We have a very strained system out up in East County, and we need to make sure the development is paying its fair share. We've grown immensely up in those, up in that farther east region, and we need to make sure that we are providing those services as we develop.
Thank you. So earlier, I skipped Mr. Glover, so I'm going to come back to Mr. Glover with this next question. Okay, next question is, Mr. Kramer has lost the county over $1 million in retaliation lawsuits due to sexual harassment cases brought by an employee. What will you do to protect county employees from further harassment, and what procedures will you put in place to make sure that this doesn't happen again?
I think there's a number of things that have gone on with the Assessor's Office and its leadership, and certainly, these are things that have to be dealt with. There's a court case that's going on right now that's actually been thrown over until after this election cycle anyway, that really is at the root of the reason that Mr. Kramer is running, because he'd like to be elected to another office so he's not put out of office when trial days come. We have seen a number of issues that have taken place, and if you look at the endorsement that I received along with the hamburgers for the, from the Times, it directs you to a number of issues that have taken place up under Mr. Kramer's leadership, and one is that the county had to pay out that million dollars in defending the case in which it was factual that there was retaliation that took place.
Time. Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
The question is that a lawsuit for sexual harassment caught, on my part, cost the county a million dollars. The answer is no, I've never been sued for sexual harassment, and their million dollar lawsuit that federal's referring to was for retaliation by the county, not Gus Kramer, so, and their process. So you had an opportunity to reduce that million dollars. I reduced my obligation of that to $10,000. Federal had a chance as a board supervisor to reduce the county's obligation of over $700,000, but he made no effort, because the attorney for the other side was a friend of his. It's that simple. So I've never been sued for sexual harassment, and the case now before the grand jury is going to be thrown out because a friend of federal's, who was the foreman of the grand jury, was just discovered by the DA that the foreman of the grand jury erased all the recordings and all the notes from their findings and investigation. Pretty important.
Mr. Tremblay?
I think we've been talking about a lot of really important issues tonight, housing, transportation, economic development, and I think it's time to look forward. I don't really want to hear much more about personal vendettas between a supervisor and assessor. I don't think that's going to move our county forward. Let's talk about the issues.
With that said, let's, we're going to circle back around. The second part of that question was, how will you protect county employees? Do you have any ideas of how to protect county employees from sexual harassment from their employers? Mr. Glover?
Certainly, I think there's a lot of training that's in place that sometimes goes without reporting, and certainly, Mr. Kramer has been, has a history of activities in terms of retaliation with his employees. But I think that the people have to be able to take a look at this. As we move forward with this election and any other election, we need to make sure that the record is clear and that the facts are out there, and it's important that you really take a look at some of the things that has been before us related to Mr. Kramer. Any other employee should be up under the same type of scrutiny, or leader within a department needs to be up in the same type of scrutiny, and to assure that you're getting someone that is a credible person and not someone that has a flawed history of a number of things, let alone the sexual harassment.
Thank you. Again, the question is not a question around Mr. Kramer's alleged harassment, it's around how would you protect county employees from further harassment or, you know, making claims? How can you help them not be in a hostile work environment? What would you do? Not, this is Mr. Kramer's question now, I apologize, but that was the original question.
Well, and I apologize, but he's just a poster child for all that.
Okay, no personal attacks tonight. Save that for later. If we were in court, I would say, "You're out of order."
Are you asking me the question?
So, Mr. Kramer, again, yes.
What we do, we have, we have an ongoing program in the office that educates people on sexual harassment, what they shouldn't, what they shouldn't do. We have an additional program on diversity and explain to people that, how they need to respect diversity. So federal's accusations to me are, I mean, he talks about my poster child having a record. This is, this is federal's criminal record right here, two DUIs and a drug trap.
That's not a part of the question.
Thank you. No, it's out of order, I agree, but he was out of order.
You're out of order.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to, we're going to take a breath, and we're going to go to Mr. Tremblay. Again, how would you protect employees, county employees, from working in a hostile work environment or from experiencing sexual harassment?
Two-fold. I think leadership and ethics start at the top. You could set it by example, and also, we should put in place maybe kind of a neutral ombudsman throughout the county, somebody that's outside of individual offices, someone that, if an employee has encountered sexual harassment, they have someone neutral and outside of their office that they can go to. All right, let's stop the personal attacks, guys.
Oh, come on.
Thank you. All right. Next question is, so now we're going back to Mr. Tremblay. Next question. Spending habits are a key issue. What, if any, ideas do you have that can provide the district with more money or ideas not to spend the money you have?
Could you repeat that?
Does that make sense? So the question is basically saying that there are some issues with spending habits in the county, and what ideas do you have basically to stop the district from spending the money in inappropriate ways or keeping money within the district?
I think transparency and communication is essential to make sure that folks in the county understand how money is being spent, so making sure we're getting that out there. But we, we have our pension obligation bond coming up that got us out of a big rut. We're in pretty good shape now, we could be in better shape, but if we're able to focus on bringing new business in, bringing new jobs in, that's going to increase revenue, that we can help, you know, work on other new programs and new services for folks here in the county.
Mr. Glover?
Yes, these are the things that we continue to work on. There needs to be straightforward commitments made by the districts as a whole, the board of supervisors in terms of spendings and what's allowable, what's not. I don't think that money are going out that is being unnecessarily spent in any other district, but we need to assure that the policies are in place to deal with any spending that's over and above what's allotted.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
We're talking about budgetary issues here. I've been the department head for almost twenty-five years, always lived within my budget, always returned money to the board of supervisors so they could spend it on their favorite projects. I have a track record of always making my budget. Federal can't say that about his own budget as a supervisor for his own staff. He has the worst budget overrun of all five board members, and I don't know how you, they don't say anything to you about it, I guess I'm subsidizing it, congratulations. But every year, I've given back over a million dollars to the board of supervisors out of a $16 million budget. I understand law enforcement, I understand fire, I understand other public safety, I understand land use, I understand public works, I understand the finance of the county through the assessor's office and the other offices, the tax collector and the outer controller. This would give me an edge up, a leg up over the other candidates, truly being the financier of the group.
Time. So this question is related to that question. You just spoke about budgeting and being able to manage a budget. How do you propose to find money to fund new projects? So this question is starting with, I think I'm back around to Mr. Glover.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I started off saying that I'm very proud of the fact that Contra Costa County has had a structurally sound budget for years. We are AAA rated and we live within the budget. We are very good stewards of the dollars that our taxpayers bring in every year and making sure that we provide the necessary services that are impertinent. One of the things that I look to do with the Northern Waterfront Initiative is an economic engine to bring more resources to the county so that we are able to provide those services, not only dollars to the counties, but within the cities that are also a part of the Northern Waterfront infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
What's the question again?
The question is, how do you propose to find money to fund new projects?
Well, it depends what the new projects are. New projects, if they're related to transportation, we'll get money from the feds and from the state. If they're related to social services or health services, again, we'll get the majority of that money from the feds, and creating more money is, you either get it from the larger agency that's under, that oversees these services, or you go to the taxpayers and you ask them for more money. You have, if the taxpayers don't want these services, they won't look for them.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay?
I'll add on, just like Measure J, that's what we're doing right now. We're asking folks to, to create new services and pay additional taxes on that, on an additional sales tax. We have a $4.4 billion budget, only 10% of which is even, you know, accessible. Most other, other things are Medicaid grants or federal dollars that are moving through the county that are appropriated out, that the board of supervisors doesn't have access to. So I've talked about it earlier, we need to bring jobs here, find new ways of making economic growth, smart growth, and that will, that'll help raise the revenues throughout the county.
Thank you. Okay, next question from Mr. Kramer. How can you, as supervisor, improve the educational opportunities for our poorest communities?
Knowing, knowing what your job as supervisor is, is very important. The supervisor, county supervisors do not have the responsibility or a lot of finances regarding education. That is up to the local school districts and the superintendent of education for the entire county. Now, there's nothing wrong with a supervisor encouraging self-funded or assessment districts for a particular area. The board of supervisors does it all the time for lighting districts, landscaping district, police districts. There's nothing wrong with having an assessment district for local entry education.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay?
Yeah, I, I'll add on to that again. Supervisors don't have a direct role in education, but we are instrumental, or the board of supervisors instrumental in providing services and working with school districts to make sure the needs of the kids and the students are met. I'm endorsed by a number of educators from Martinez Unified School District, as well as the Community College Board. Working with other elected officials to make sure that they have the resources that they need is essential.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Once again, it's encouraging and working with our state officials to assure that the money is trickling down to the locals, and one of the things that Mr. Kramer said that was right was the fact that we don't have jurisdiction over education, but we do have influence over our elected officials that's in high places. One of my endorsements comes from the state superintendent of instruction, Tony Thurman, who I, who I work with as well as the folks with the Community College District, to assure that we are trying to provide those services in any way that a supervisor or supervisors as a whole can influence bringing more dollars to our educational system. That's very much important, because we need to understand the county as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay? Next question. The unincorporated area of Rodeo feels like it's the neglected stepchild when it comes to county representation. What would you do as a District Five supervisor to provide better representation?
I'd show up. Just like last week, I held a town hall at D's Giant Burgers in Rodeo, and it was, it was packed, and one of the comments I received is, "We've never seen our supervisor out here. This is so great that you're out here and speaking with us." When you're in an unincorporated community, your only elected official essentially is your supervisor, and if you, they're not accessible, they can't get ahold of you, then you're SOL. So I'll, I'll be there for them, they'll know who I am, and I'll work hard on behalf of them.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Yeah, one of the things that's important is that you have someone that's in touch with the community on a day-to-day basis, and that's why I have liaisons within my office that's worked, work in the various communities. And we have a municipal body that, that also serves out there, our MACS, that's advisory to the supervisor's office and working with the liaisons, that's a part of that office. But we want to continue that effort, we want to make sure that the community is engaged and that they do have access.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, I grew up in a unincorporated area of this county in one of the poorest neighborhoods in Bay Point West Pittsburgh, and I know what it's like to live in a community that's, that's the unwanted stepchild of the county. And I recognize Rodeo is going through that same malady. When I was doing public works, road improvements out there, they were just so glad to see anybody from the county, they would, like, you were their new cousin or something, they'd hug you and say, "Oh, thank you for being here. What are you going to do for us? What are you going to do?" And it was very rewarding. Yes, we need to get people into the community and find out what their needs. Ask them, ask the MAC, ask the local people, what do you want? You want better sidewalks, you want better roads, you want more police services, you want fire services? What do you want that we can go find the resource for you?
Mr. Glover? Next question. The recent Urban Shield trainings were canceled due to feelings of individuals in Alameda. Contra Costa Sheriff also benefited from this critical training exercise. What will you do to ensure that our critical trainings are not impeded by the uneducated opinions of a small few?
Can, can you go back?
So it sounds like they're saying there were some trainings that were canceled in Alameda that the Contra Costa Sheriff's Department also benefited from. So the question is, what will you do to ensure critical trainings such as those are not impeded, are not canceled, so Contra Costa can benefit from them?
One of the things I think that we have is a very good training program that takes place for our deputy sheriffs, but if there, if there are priority trainings that need to take place, then we need to understand that and make sure that the sheriff has the budget necessary to provide those type of training. And so once again, that's, that's going to be a policy decision that's made by the sheriff in terms of his budget, and if there's a need, then we need to assure that we're working with that budget to get people proper training.
Thank you.
Public safety is very important.
Thank you. Mr. Glover? I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. The sheriff, remember, is an independently elected office of the county. He represents all the citizens of this county, and it would be up to him to tell us what his needs are and, and for his staff. Yeah, we want the best for these folks. We don't want to shortchange them any training. That would be counterproductive for the wealth and well-being for all the citizens of Contra Costa County, just like we wouldn't short, we wouldn't short-sheet Mr. Wells out here for his members in the fire department. It would be foolhardy, it would be counterproductive and hurt property values. I mean, I'm not kidding you, it would seriously hurt property values if your safety and safety services are not up to snuff.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay?
I think a lot of it's been said, but one thing I'll add on is, while we have budget oversight over oversight over the deputy sheriffs, the Sheriff Livingston is not compliant currently with state law requiring transparency over disciplinary records. So, we need to work with him to do that, but absolutely make sure that they get the resources they need for the trainings, et cetera. This is not a conditional thing. I think what's been said over the resources, make sure they get the training, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer. What assurances can you give to the Northern Waterfront Initiative that will actually achieve something? Nothing has happened in the past six years. What projects have been achieved in six years for the Northern Waterfront?
There is one project out there in Oakley that just broke ground the other day, and there was a nice article about it in the paper. There's no promised jobs for it, or there's some businesses that expressed interest that have, give letters of intent, but, but nobody's really, really ready to go. I'm not sure what to do about East County. I think we need to get not more light industrial, but we need more manufacturing. It's the manufacturing jobs that were the engine that ran east Contra Costa County from Pittsburgh, Antioch, Oakley for, for a better part of the century, and those jobs have all disappeared. And the pension for that area is settling for jobs that pay $15, $20 an hour when we should be focusing toward manufacturing jobs that produce, you know, bark train cars or, or, or ferries that go up and down the river that, that take skilled craftspeople that, that would do jobs that pay, you know, $14, $15 an hour.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay.
And I think I've already mentioned earlier that we really need to focus on bringing economic development along the waterfront, just transition, transitioning away from fossil fuel and oil and gas industries, but not ones that are going to be putting people out of work now. We need to work with the cities, the elected officials, community leaders, to find out what they want in their community, whether that's an Amtrak station out here in Hercules or additional bus service to keep people moving. There's a lot that we can be working on, but I think we've talked, covered a lot of those issues already tonight.
Thank you. Okay, this is the final question.
I didn't ask it.
Oh, I apologize. I keep skipping you.
That's okay. One of the things that's happening is that in the city of Oakley, there's a number of things taking place where we're looking at huge employment opportunities. Gus spoke to that. Antioch has the same thing that is taking place within that community where they, they've had sites that are being looked at by a major developer and they're going to be announcing that out. In the city of Pittsburgh, one of the things that's happening is that Bombardier will be doing the bark cars, the new bark cars will be manufactured there locally, as well as the possibility of others coming on site. I think that the anchor is in the water now. When we look at what's going on with, with Hercules and the possibility of another train stop being there, that'll be before the corridor commission on Monday. And I think we're going to be successful there.
Time. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tremblay. You all have mentioned a number of services tonight. Transportation, police, fire, but no mention was made in regards to health services. Do you understand that IHSS providers do a lot to save Contra Costa County taxpayer funds in emergency room preventative services? What do you have to say about that?
Well, supporting our county workers is, is core. I think we talked a little bit about health services, supporting our county hospital. Emergency room workers are, are essential and we need to be supporting them as well. But we need services not just in Martinez, but also out here in West County and in East County as well, beyond what we currently have.
Mr. Glover.
Is your question specific to IHSS?
It seems like it's specific to IHSS workers and health services and the fact that they do a lot of work in the county to save money. And you guys didn't address them.
So, a lot of that work that's being done is with the elderly community. Those services are, they're, they're not county employees, they're actually state employees, but the county is a major contributor to the fund. And one of the things that has happened is that we're working to be in compliance with the minimum wage rule that's in place. So, it's a negotiation that takes place not only here locally, but with the state and trying to make sure that we can ensure that those folks, that the wages that they're making today will eventually be the $15 mark that our minimum wage standard is.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer.
Yes, a healthy community is a safe community. You, you, your public health is the, almost the bottom line in the economics of your, of your particular community. Before these, these folks were helping their families and their, and their houses, it was, the county hospital was inundated with people who weren't receiving enough care. And that has seriously saved the taxpayers lots of money by keeping these folks from being constant revolving door at the county hospital.
Thank you. So, at this time, I would like to give you all an opportunity to make your closing remarks. So, we'll start with Mr. Glover.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think what you've heard today is a lot of things from my opponents here that talks about what you're going to do, what you want to do. I have a proven record of what we've done and what we continue to do and what we look forward to doing in the future. I appreciate the fact that, that's in terms of services, I've had endorsements from key individuals. We have to work with our state government and certainly I have the endorsement of every representative from the state legislature that represents this district. In the congressional districts, I have representatives there that have endorsed my candidacy. I have the firefighters and the deputy sheriff to make sure that our safety element are in place. We have had a great work relationship down through the years and I want to continue to work with them to make sure that the tools are in place. I have every mayor within the district that have represented me as well as council members. I think my record speaks for itself. You have a lot of, you, you have my opponents that are talking about things that are not relevant to the fact of what we have done. It is important that we have the public trust. And I think that I have demonstrated that over 20 years, that the public has, has viewed my record and said that I am doing the right things. I want to continue to do the great work that has taken place. We are going to always have problems, but it's important that we allow, that the public makes a decision on who their elected officials are. And I think checking my record, that I will be successful in this election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes, I also will stand on my record and, and show that for the last 16, 25 years, actually, I've had a stellar budgetary record and, and helped the county get through some pretty miserable times. Federal is very proud of all the people that have endorsed him, but he forgets to remind you that there was a time when these very same people, labor, was, was doing a recall election against him because they were tired of him not communicating with them. Only after he gave them the raise they wanted did the recall go away. So, I don't know what that's got to do with trust, Federal. What we need is transparency in government. I'm tired of the board having executive session or closed session and making decisions that affect the citizens of this county. Those should be recorded so that an ombudsman could look at them if someone questioned what you were doing back there behind the scenes. An ombudsman could, or a judge could review them and say, this violated the Brown Act, this did not. You're off base. No, you're right on. That is what transparency in government is all about. And that's what you'll get when I become a county supervisor, is total transparency and none of this beside, behind the doors, making deals and going, and going that way. Thank you very much for putting this on today. It's a pleasure being here. I love this part of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you once again, everyone, for being here. Thanks for the libraries, the League of Women Voters. I think the choice couldn't be more stark. This is, we have had the politics, the same challenges and the same politics for the last 20 years in this county, and it's time for a change. Federal has said he was going to retire eight years ago, four years ago, and it's time that we had new leadership step forward and put them, try some new ideas out. I didn't run for office or decide to run for office or take this decision lightly. I think it's time that we kind of step outside of our box and get someone in office that is going to be out in the community and work with folks. And I don't see that the current leadership has been as effective as, as it proclaims to be. We need to build stronger alliances and regional, regional coalitions. I've worked on policy at the federal level, at the state level, and I'm confident that if you entrust this seat with me, you'll have strong ethical leadership in this position.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. So, with that said, we are closing. So, on behalf of the, the League of Women Voters, I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight and for your thoughtful questions. And I would like to thank Mr. Glover, Mr. Kramer and Mr. Tremblay for your thoughtful answers and your thoughtful discussion and for trying to really stay on, on track. You got into a little scrimmage for a second, but you all pulled it together. It's really important for, for community members to come out and ask these tough questions because if they don't, then they won't have transparency. And all three of you all talked about transparency and about working for the community. So, I just want to say again, thank you for coming out tonight and spending your time with us. And thank you all again, audience members, for coming out and for asking the tough questions. But keep asking tough questions. These individuals, whoever you choose, will work for you. So, please, stand up for yourself and ask the tough questions. And next time when you come to a forum, please write legibly so the moderator can understand the question. And thank you again, League of Women Voters, for having confidence in me as the moderator. And with that said, I'd like to wish you all a good evening. Thank you.
You're probably going to be doing this for fun.
Recall, let me talk. I've never been on a recall.